Do I have a motion to come out of executive session? I want to make a, I know that no action was taken.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, second by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor of coming out of executive session say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. We are now out of executive session. Mr. Chair, I salute that we approve employee A's request as written and according to the policy of GBI. Have a motion by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Rebels. Any discussion on matter? We'd have to go back into executive session. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Do I have a motion on superintendent evaluation?
Mr. Chairman, our motion to approve superintendent evaluation instrument as discussed.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Rebels. Have a second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? We need to go into executive session. Any need for discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to end executive session?
Salute.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson. Have a second. And this is for the executive session portion of the meeting only. All those in favor say aye. Motion to adjourn executive session. And we'll start back in about three minutes, so you guys bear with us. Let us call this meeting for York School District One. Board of Trustees General Session Order. Like welcome everybody this evening. Have for infocation tonight, have Reverend Amanda Robertson from Fiscal Church of Good Shepherd. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me to be with you all. I'm offering these prayers for schools and also for young persons, and I invite you to pray with me. Oh eternal God bless all schools and especially bless the York School District One. That they may be lively centers for sound learning, new discovery, and the pursuit of wisdom. And grant that all those who teach and all those who learn may find in this season some time for rest and renewal. Help all those who shepherd our young people. To take failure not as a measure of our worth, but a chance for a new start. Give us and them strength to hold our faith and our trust. That you are with us wherever life takes us. Through Jesus Christ our Lord and the power of your holy and life-giving spirit. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to know that we do have a quorum present with all members present. Now have the pledge of allegiance by Daisy Freeman from York Middle School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just make a note of confirmation of notice to the media. Do we have any members of the media present this evening? There appear to be no members of the media present. We do have one person who signed up to speak in public forum. Is that person here tonight? Just make note for the record that individual signed up for public forum is not present. Seeing so, we will move forward to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move for adoption.
So move by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? No discussion needed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Will now move into recognitions. And we have student recognitions by Ms. Lisa Spangler, Coordinator of Special Projects. Thank you, Ms. Spangler. And we will have Christopher Rebels assisting with the recognition. Recognitions.
Good evening. I'd like to ask Ms. Cassidy Valerino, who's the principal at York Middle School, to come forward. Don't see Mr. Hong. He couldn't be here. But we'd like to congratulate Daisy Freeman for winning the individual National History Day exhibit. She now qualifies to compete in the national competition in Washington DC. Congratulations, Daisy. Congratulations. And from York Middle School, I'd like to ask Ms. Debbie Williams to come forward. Mr. McSwain, I believe, is on vacation tonight. Tonight, we'd like to congratulate Brantley Byrd, who is a fifth grader at York Intermediate School. And he is the 23-24 York County VIP winner for the York County Solicitor's Office Calendar Contest. Brantley attended an award ceremony and received a gift card from Books-A-Million by Solicitor Kevin Brackett. And he'll also received a framed copy of his artwork. Congratulations, Brantley.
Thank you, Ms. Spangler. Congratulations to you both for your hard work.
Mr. Childers.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
More recognitions, please, since I may have to leave. I wanted to acknowledge the high school graduation. I know you're not being recognized tonight, but it was a great graduation. Superintendent Cox had us down the hallway. We got to see buses come in, students arriving, but it was so organized. So I can't leave tonight with, and you guys, I will be leaving early, but I do not want to miss out. I'm saying that you all did a great job at graduation and it's to be commended. So thank you Chairman Childers for allowing me to say that prior to my leaving.
And Ms. Johnson, that is appreciated. Glad you brought it up. I've actually had other members of the school board, members in other districts, to say the same thing. I think that goes a long way to our district, so thank you for bringing that up. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, ma'am. We'll move to the registration update. Mr. Chad Carper, Director of Student Services, will provide an update. Mr. Carper?
Well, good evening Chairman Childers, Superintendent Cox, and Board of Trustees. Thank you for allowing me to give you a brief update on where we are with school registration for the 23-24 school year. Let's see if this works here. Sorry, very good. The current registration numbers for each school are, at this time, they're a little bit low. But we are still very early in the new and returning student registration process. As you see there, Cotton Bell Elementary has 185 students registered. Harold C. Johnson, 148. Hickory Grove Sharon, 71. Hunter Street Elementary, 170. Jefferson Elementary, 100. York Intermediate, 68. York Middle, 75. And York Conference High School, 81. For a total of 898. And our communications and marketing departments are pushing out registration reminders via social media and also our website, our district website. And our school principals are using weekly calls to remind parents and also their big signs out front. So we're getting word out there. It's just a little late and it's a little early in the season right now for parents. But I do want to take an opportunity. I would like to encourage all our York families that have new or returning students to please go to our website and register your student today for the 23-24 school year. I wanted to say that to all our parents and everyone here tonight. Want to encourage them to go out as soon as possible because the sooner they go out and they register, the quicker we can get ready for the new school year. And we're excited about that. The next slide, we have some very important registration dates for the 23-24 school year. Our employee-student transfer window opened on March the 24th. On May the 1st, our returning student registration opened. And then on June the 26th, our district-wide transfer request window will open. And of course, on August 7th, here it comes, the first day of the school year, which is super exciting. It's going to be one of the best ones yet. So we're excited about next school year and getting our students ready. So, do you have any questions?
Do I have any questions for Mr. Carper?
I texted my wife to see if my daughter got registered, but I haven't heard back.
Well, I'm sure she is. Thank you so much for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Carper. Well, now to move to Coordinator of Instructional Technology, K4, Mr. Tim Cooper for textbook adoptions.
Good evening Superintendent Cox, Chairman Childers, members of the board. Thank you for a few minutes of your time this evening. This evening, I bring you one action item, textbook adoption of a handful of titles related to AP Chemistry and banned beginning at our sixth grade level and all the way up through the high school. Would ask for your approval of those.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Cooper, prior to asking for vote? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve as presented by Mr. Anderson, second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Most carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Now I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Ms. Annie Hager, for budget second reading.
Good evening again. Tonight, we have our second and final reading of the 23-24 budget. As you heard, we recapped that at our public hearing. And so tonight, I ask for your approval for second and final reading.
Do you have any questions, Ms. Hager, for the vote? Do I have a motion?
So move for the adoption for second reading. That's why I'm here.
Most of my, Ms. Johnson?
Second.
For the budget for second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion?
I have one question. How the compromise, was there any changes to any of the funding?
Not to education. Everything remained the same for education.
And you're asking from the state level?
That's right, yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the budget, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I wasn't on that, by the way, I forgot. Seems like a unanimous decision. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hager.
Thank you. The next item is our easement for Comporium on the property of York Middle School. We did add one thing into your board docs this afternoon, late this afternoon. It was requested that as they run the internet to the affinity section at York Middle School that all that is put underground and not above ground. And so attach to your board docs is a letter from Comporium that if approved tonight, will attach it to the agreement they submitted to us along with that letter. So I ask for your approval for this easement.
And just, I know the board docs is slow, so if anybody needs time to look at something, please let me know before we go to vote or question.
Absolutely.
Do you have any questions, Ms. Hager, on the easement for Comporium or two Comporium? Do I have a motion?
Have a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve as presented by Mr. Rebels. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hager.
Yep, absolutely. And then the last one, first reading of the policies listed before you. We did add in, we just recently received our model policy on the pay rental leave. And so what we did, since we've not had an opportunity to discuss that, we attached that to our leave policy here for first reading. And with the opportunity that when, the next time we get together for a work session for us to discuss that pay rental leave policy in detail. So ask her for your approval for first reading of the policies listed before you this evening.
Before we go to vote, just a question on, so there are a few questions, just I think they're going to come up. That's the reason we're going through first reading to go through that. And we'll have discussion in our work session to make sure those questions are answered. Not only from a legal standpoint, but also from a state standpoint for anybody here watching. So just want to throw that out. Yes, ma'am.
For formality purposes, because the law is already enacted, we are attaching it as an admin rule to our existing leave policy. Just want to make sure that is clear.
Because it was effective, or it will be effective June the 26th.
So do you have any other questions on that before we move on? Do I have a motion?
So move for the adoption for first reading of the policies listed in our packet for tonight.
Motion by Ms. Johnson for the policies as listed in the board member packet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hager. Now I'll turn it over to Office of Human Resources, Ms. Jennifer Bowlin. Welcome, Ms. Bowlin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to say thank you for this opportunity, first of all, because I haven't gotten to formally thank y'all. And I have three action items here tonight. And as you see, I'm riding solo, so it's official. I've been two days in my office. So, so thank you for all the team that have been behind me, helping me all the way. And even Oliver in the shadows helping me in the evening to get prepared for this. So, so thank you again for this opportunity. Action item one, certified retirements.
Do I have a motion for certified retirements?
We do. Prove certified retirements with congratulations.
Prove, motion by Mr. Rebels with congratulations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? We'll have to go into executive session. No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
All right, and our next one is certified retiree recommendations.
Do I have a motion for certified retiree recommendations for the 23-24 year?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve as presented by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
And our third item is certified recommendations for the 2023-2024 school year.
Do we have a motion for certified recommendations for 2023-2024 school year?
So move for adoption for certified recommendations for 2023-2024.
Motion by Ms. Johnson for approval, recommend approval for certified recommendations 2023-2024 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
And I also put a chart, I think Renee put it in your seat for you this evening, just to kind of give you a little bit of an update of kind of where we are as far as hiring and vacancies. Right now, we have a total of 19 vacancies that are still out there pending, but we have five hires pending. So right now, that gives us a current number of about 14 vacancies. So we're in a good place, I think, right now. So I've been putting things out there in other places and trying some other hiring websites and trying to get our postings out there to other places. So I'm excited to see what that brings in. So we'll see what happens.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bowlin. I do want to mention, I mean, you know, there's always the talk of what's really going on. And to have 19 vacancies and probably five of those filled, that's a reality in numbers. So for those here and those hopefully watching, those are the numbers.
Exactly.
That's the actual information. So thank you for presenting that.
No problem. Any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll turn it over to Officer Superintendent, Ms. Cox.
Thank you, Chairman Childers, board members. The first item that I have for you this evening is establishing formally our meeting dates for the 23-24 school year. You have a listing in your packet, and those are the second Tuesday of each month. And we did not have to make any adjustments due to holidays or spring breaks this year. So that is an action item for your approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the dates for the next year's meetings?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve as presented by Mr. Anderson. A second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion on the matter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Motion carries.
The next item that I have for you is also an action item. You have in your packet a copy of our current organizational chart as well as our proposed organizational chart for the 23-24 school year. This is as we discussed at our last work session.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve as presented by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rebels. Any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries.
The next item that I have for you this evening is also an action item, and I am pleased to be bringing forth two recommendations for assistant principals within the district, and this will complete our administrative staffing.
Do I have a motion for approval of administrative recommendations?
So move for adoption for administrative recommendation.
Motion by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion, will need to go into executive session? No discussion needed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item that I have for you comes up on the heels of what Ms. Bowden was talking about. It is an information item on summer hiring process. Per our board policy, policy GCF, during the summer months, when the board does not have regularly scheduled meetings, the board authorizes the superintendent or his or her designate to approve the hiring decisions regarding the employment of professional personnel pending final approval of the board at the regularly scheduled August board meeting. So those folks in process, as well as the 14 that are still recruiting, will move forward with those hirings and have folks in place when school begins for you to ratify the August meeting.
Anybody have any discussion on the items? Just for information, but any discussion needed? Move on to the next.
And then my final item for this evening are our upcoming dates. As you can see before you, we do have, the city is hosting Penny's for Progress meeting. It will be at City Chambers, City Council Chambers on June the 21st at 6:00 PM. I am personally unable to attend, however, Charlie Westbrook and Kevin Queen will be attending on our behalf as a district representative to listen and participate in that conversation. Will be closed July 3 and 4 for the district holiday. July 19 and 20, we'll be offsite at Milliken for our administrative retreat. Over the last couple of years, we've divided our administrative retreat into two parts. We do our nuts and bolts during the month of June, and we do that in district. That's just our policies and procedures and the detailed information, and then we'll go off and do some team building and leadership and inspirational pieces on July 19 and 20, and we'll be doing that at Milliken. Wanted to share that with you. July 31st, we will resume normal office hours back to five days a week because that's the day that our teachers return, and we'll have convocation on August the 1st, making sure that we included the time there for you, because we'd love to have y'all join us if your schedule allows. That's all I have for you this evening, and I appreciate all of your support. It's been a great school year. Ms. Betty, thank you for mentioning the high school graduation. I was incredibly pleased with how that went. Ms. Valerino is in the back. I would say the same thing for the eighth grade promotion ceremony. If you were able to attend it, the crowd at both instances were incredibly respectful and a dignified event. So thank you to the administrators for encouraging that and for our parents and community for supporting us.
And just to make a note for you, the June 21st meeting for Penny's for Progress, anybody can attend that, so. You know, board members, public, whoever that is for this entire area. It's not just about the school, so. And just thank you for everything this year. I mean, it's our last meeting until August 8th, just so everybody knows. So we get us a little break too, which is nice.
Ms. Webb is very thankful.
She gets to go on her vacation. So does anybody have any other business at this time, just before closing? Any need for executive session? Any need or motion for executive session? Anything else for you, Ms. Cox?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Anderson, second by Ms. Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we adjourn?